We are ready. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
I'm present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Present.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, I want to make a note for everyone before we proceed, um, especially for members of the public that we are in the process tonight of implementing some new agenda management software. Some of you who closely follow the council agenda have probably already noticed some exciting changes, like how relevant communications are now hyperlinked within the agenda. Um, but tonight, the council is implementing some other changes that for now are only visible on our end. Um, so I say that to say that there may be some pauses tonight and we may need to fix some technical glitches here and there. But bear with us as we try this for the first time live. Um, we are very excited about the changes underway and what they will mean to making our meetings and agendas more streamlined and easy to follow for citizens. So, um, thank you Diane and to the council team for their work on this and more to come. And thanks in advance for everyone's patience with this tonight. Um, so we will move on. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 1st, 2020?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The December 1st, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
We want to do the motion to suspend the rules. Thanks. Thank you.
Um, so a motion tonight, a motion to suspend the rules is in order for the adoptions of resolutions pertaining to personnel actions.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Um, please read Resolution Number One.
Yes ma'am. Actually, we have, we're skipping to Resolution Number Four right now.
Okay.
Introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Tracus, and Harder. Whereas after many years of dedicated service to the St. Louis County Council and the people of St. Louis County, Chris Palasek has announced she is retiring. And whereas Chris began her long and dedicated career of service to the county right out of high school. And whereas for her entire career with the county, with the county, Chris worked in the office of the county council. And over the years, she has served nearly forty council members. And whereas during all of those years, Chris never had a formal job description because instead she simply took on any duty asked of her with enthusiasm and determination. And whereas, in addition to her numerous administrative duties, Chris also served as the planner and coordinator for the biennial inauguration ceremonies and for council's yearly holiday party, attending to details large and small to make each event welcoming and memorable. And whereas, a natural caregiver, Chris has for many years taken care of council members and her colleagues as though they were members of her family. And although she will be greatly missed, she has earned this time to take care of herself and enjoy her family, especially her devoted and loving partner Bob, her wonderful daughters Danielle and Nicole, and her beautiful grandchildren. And whereas upon her well-deserved retirement, we wish Chris many happy and relaxing camping trips with her family and her large circle of friends. And whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to recognize and honor Chris Palasek for her decades of dedicated service to the council and to St. Louis County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One. The County Council expresses its most sincere gratitude to Chris Palasek for a lifetime dedicated to public service to the council and to St. Louis County and sends its best wishes to Chris for a relaxing and enjoyable retirement which she has most certainly earned.
Uh, Chris, thank you for your many years of service to the county council, to St. Louis County government, and to St. Louis County as a whole. Um, I see your name here. I'm not sure. I, I think you're listening to us, but we are gratefully um, appreciative of all that you have done over such a long career. So thank you and um, best wishes to you in your retirement.
You're here.
Um, so we will move forward now, uh, to Madam Clerk. Will you please read Resolution Number Five?
Oh, Madam Chair, do we want to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Got excited and got ahead of myself. Yes, we will vote on these one at a time. So, um, I did hear, uh, so I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I will send out for votes. Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye. You got to punch the button.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Four, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Four is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution Number Five.
Yes ma'am. Resolution Number Five introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Tracus, and Harder. A resolution. Whereas after many years of dedicated service to the St. Louis County Council and the people of St. Louis County, Norm McCourt has announced that he is retiring from county government. And whereas after retirement from his private sector career, Norm began his service to St. Louis County and to the county council in 2007 and has worked for the office of the county council during that entire time. And whereas over the years, the council has benefited from Norm's IT expertise, especially in the area of audiovisual equipment, as well as his willingness to take on any task, large or small. And whereas, Norm seems to have an exhaustible supply of energy as he currently serves as the mayor of the city of Blackjack, Missouri, and he has for over twenty years, and served as a member of the Blackjack City Council for fifteen years prior to that. And whereas, everyone who knows and works with Norm knows that his unflagging commitment to public service and local government extends well beyond his holding of office in Blackjack, as he is also the immediate past president of the Municipal League of Metropolitan St. Louis, serves on the board of the East-West Gateway Coordinating Council, is a past president of the Missouri Municipal League, and has served on the Missouri Municipal League's Executive Board for the past fifteen years. And whereas, Norm's love for and commitment to the St. Louis region derives from the fact that he is a lifelong resident of North St. Louis County, having grown up in Berkeley, Missouri, and graduated from Berkeley Senior High School. And whereas, upon his retirement from county service, it is hoped that Norm will be able to enjoy spending even more time with his two sons and six grandchildren and at his favorite fishing holes, although we suspect he will still find the time to work for the betterment of our community. And whereas, it is appropriate and fitting for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to recognize and honor Mayor Norm McCourt for his decades of dedicated service to the county council and the people of St. Louis County, the city of Blackjack, and to the wider St. Louis region. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One. The County Council expresses its most sincere gratitude to Norm McCourt for his fourteen years of dedicated public service to St. Louis County and the county council and sends its best wishes to Norm for a relaxing and enjoyable retirement.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Five, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Five is adopted. Um, thank you, Norm. I see you here joining us tonight. Um, thank you for your many years of service to St. Louis County in many ways, and I feel like I am forever indebted to you because you showed me where to park on my first day here. So, thank you. Very well deserved. Best to you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least say how auspicious today is. It would be difficult enough losing one of these professionals. Losing them both at the same time, um, is, is is going to be challenging for the council. I only hope that whoever replaces them brings the same level of professionalism, commitment, and competence that Norm and, um, Chris brought to the council and to each of us. So, they will be truly missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I echo that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I too. Stand for Norm and, uh, really appreciate your work on the console and helping out uh, newbies when we all come on the console and getting us set up and and showing us where things are and how to, how the console works. And I really appreciate that and all that you do. And Norm, I want to make sure you leave the key for the candy drawer uh, on your desk when you leave. Don't take that with you. So, um, we, we all need that. So, put it on your desk so we can see it. But thanks a lot and, and hopefully see you again.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number One.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for Item Number Two, and that will be the order.
Item Number Three.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Four.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Five.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Six.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as requested, please.
I think we might have gotten ahead one item, Councilman Tracus.
Sorry.
Yes. Um, Item Number Six is pertaining to another transfer. Um, I will receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to Item Number Seven, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Eight, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item Number Nine, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Ten.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Eleven, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Twelve, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Uh, same motion through Item Number Fourteen, and that will be the order.
Moving on to the add-ons this evening. Item Number One, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Two, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Ethics Committee.
Uh, so ordered.
Oops. Yes. Excuse me. Item Number Three, First District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report to the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. As the holiday spirit arrives this year, it is tempered with the loss and anxiety caused by this pandemic, which has been with us most of the year and well into 2021. Vaccine distribution is expected to begin at the end of this month, but it will not be widely available for several months. So we cannot let up on our efforts to curb the virus. We must suspend our travel and avoid gatherings that could endanger the health of our loved ones. If we can get universal compliance with the pandemic protocols in place to protect us all, we can slow the spread and speed up our economic recovery. Last week, the White House Coronavirus Task Force put out a grim report on the state of the pandemic nationwide, as well as in Missouri. Here are some of the findings and the recommendations from that report. Every county in Missouri has moderate or high-risk levels of community transmission. Ninety-one percent of high levels of transmission considered red zone counties. St. Louis, St. Charles, and Jackson Counties combined to represent more than one-third of the cases statewide. And we are in a very dangerous place here and across the country due to the COVID uh, current extremely high and limited hospital capacity. As the White House report stressed, if you are over sixty-five or have significant health conditions, you should not enter any indoor public spaces where anyone is unmasked due to the immediate risk to you or your health. You should have groceries and medications delivered. And anyone who gathered beyond their immediate household during the Thanksgiving weekend should assume that they became infected and get tested. If you are under forty, there is a good chance you will not develop symptoms. However, you could be dangerous to others. If you are over sixty-five or have significant medical conditions and you gathered outside of your immediate household, you are at significant risk for serious COVID infection. All states and all counties must flatten the curve now in order to sustain the health system for both COVID and non-COVID emergencies. The report also highlights the depth of viral spread across Missouri and recognizes that it remains significant, and without public health orders in place compelling Missourians to act differently, the spread will remain unyielding with significant impact on the healthcare system. Mitigation and messaging in Missouri need to be further strengthened as other states have done. Effective practices to decrease transmission in public spaces, including requiring masks and limiting indoor capacity in businesses until cases and test positivity decreases from the current red zone to the yellow zone. The White House report also stressed the importance of getting a flu shot to keep more people healthy and out of the hospitals this winter. Additionally, on Friday, the CDC provided its latest guidance. The agency stressed that indoor venues such as restaurants where distancing is not maintained and the consistent use of face masks is not possible are at particularly high risk. In St. Louis County, restaurants can provide outdoor dining, carryout, and delivery, but not indoor dining this time. Transmission can also be reduced by promoting working from home, as well as reducing the size of gatherings, which St. Louis County currently restricts to ten. With colder weather, more time spent indoors, the holiday season, and about fifty percent of transmissions coming from those who do not have symptoms, the U.S. hasn't entered a phase of high-level transmission, where a multi-pronged approach to implementing all evidence-based public health strategies is essential. And these protocols include universal mask use, maintaining physical distance from others, and limiting in-person contacts, attending non-essential indoor spaces and crowded outdoor spaces, postponing travel, and washing your hands frequently and thoroughly. These actions will provide a bridge to a future where there is a wide availability of vaccines, and that's when safe return to a more normal activity will be possible. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Um, we will now move on to the report of special committees. Receive, file, and the report dated November twenty-third, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second, Days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, we will now move into the public forum portion of our evening tonight. Um, when your name is announced, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking and then state your first and last name and zip code for the record. The clerk will inform you when your three-minute time allotment is up. Um, public forum is generally limited to about an hour, three minutes per speaker. Um, and again, your, your name will be called by the clerk when it is your turn to speak. So with that, Madam, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker. And, and also let us know how many speakers we can expect this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have seven speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Caroline Whacker, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Okay, so I'm Caroline Whacker. My zip code is six-three-zero-two-one. Um, and good evening. Twenty-twenty has definitely, um, been a year where the great power that is possessed by our elected officials has been made very evident. And as Peter Parker wisely said, "With great power comes great responsibility." And as leaders, your words do carry extra weight. So I'd like to refer to the words that were said last Wednesday on Twitter by Chairwoman Clancy. She said that yesterday, some of my colleagues passed a fake mask resolution that's non-binding if you, unless you don't understand the fundamentals of county government. And if it were to go into effect, it actually weakens our current masking orders. I'll stay focused on good policy that saves lives. Thank you for focusing on what you believe to be good policies. Your position affords you many opportunities to help people gain a better understanding of county government fundamentals. However, I couldn't find any insight or information that you provided to shed light on this issue. Instead, this came across as condescending, belittling, and to some insulting. Tweets like this one by the chairwoman are divisive at a time when that's precisely what we don't need. Councilwoman Days, thank you so much for your nonpartisan decision-making over the last recent, like, over the last, um, few weeks. You've been a real example of what leadership is all about. And when the county executive still utilizes his campaign Facebook page uh, to disseminate some information while leaving it conspicuously absent from the county government official page, it doesn't send a message to the community that this is really not a political issue. It actually gives a lot of fuel to the people that do believe that this is more about politics than it is about protection for the citizens in St. Louis County. As, as a citizen who's been following these things very closely, I would just say that I have been very disappointed by the behavior of our president on social media. I expected more from him, and I expect more from you guys, too, to say that this is not a political issue, but then to have repeated examples found across different platforms on social media that lead people to believe otherwise is not wise, and it doesn't communicate the trust and the constituents that I think you guys are seeking to have. So with that said, I would request that somebody, Chairwoman Clancy, or anybody that feels comfortable, would please just explain briefly to the people of the county what a non-binding resolution is, which ones have meaning and which ones don't, and how as citizens, we're supposed to discern between the ones that are fake and the ones that are real. Resolution sixty-six, twenty-two, and twenty-four dealing with the school resource officers seem to cause quite a stir, and I know those were non-binding resolutions as well. What's the difference between resolutions like that and sixty-six, thirty-one that passed last week? Hearing these answers from you guys will clear up a great deal of confusion in the community as many other citizens have attempted to explain this, but the people that said this can most easily-
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Thomas Madden.
This is Suzanne Burley, zip code six-three-one-two-three. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, county council. Tonight, I would like to start by saying thank you to Ms. Gray for setting up a virtual town hall meeting for December ninth. I'm registered and looking forward to submitting questions and joining the call. I'm hoping that many others in our community know about the upcoming town hall on December ninth and plan to join the call. I would also like to say that I heard you, Ms. Gray, a few weeks back when you mentioned that every week you and a few other council members feel that you were being attacked on the public forum. That stayed with me. I believe it's because I identified with you on feeling the same way. I've been getting attacked on the other side of things for asking questions, not necessarily for disagreeing with people or being disrespectful, just asking questions such as why aren't Dr. Page and Dr. Garza using their platform to inform the public of every tool possible to help fight this virus? That question right there has gotten me attacked by many, including one person that sits on this council. I wonder, why does it create such anger when we ask questions like this? In addition to what we hear almost daily from Dr. Page and Dr. Garza, why aren't they talking about other important factors to stay healthy? Or why aren't we hearing information like I heard the other day from the United States Attorney General about how they need plasma from people that have been exposed? That donating your plasma can actually save a life? This is really important information that's not getting shared. I also wanted to share my concern for all the new information I'm finding out about Dr. Page. Just this week alone, I have heard about a secret app on Dr. Page's phone that deletes texts after reading them. I heard that someone from Dr. Page's fundraising staff contacted a small business owner that had been shut down by Dr. Page. She offered to set up a private meeting for the business owner and Dr. Page to discuss ideas on how to get his business open. Sounds very sketchy. She also said she could help them politically, and then just today, I found out that over five million dollars of COVID money went to Western Anesthesiology, a business that is partially owned by Dr. Page. Hearing all of this and then knowing that kids have gone without Chromebooks and could not attend school because they didn't receive funded, funding, how can I be expected to continue to trust someone after hearing all of this? While I do understand that Dr. Page is under a microscope right now, I wouldn't have expected anyone to find the kind of corruption that I believe we are seeing. Regardless of anyone's opinion of Dr. Page, we are all witnessing a shift in public trust. And each new, each new finding only widens the gap between trust and lack thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Madden, followed by Tom Sullivan. Mr. Madden?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
My name is Tom Madden.
My name is Tom Madden, and I live in 63128, 6th District. I just wanted to, I appreciate the opportunity to address the council tonight, and I just wanted to urge the members tonight not to attempt to take away the business of instituting important health restrictions from the career experts at the Department of Health. Every single day, there are more deaths than the last. My aunt actually passed away from COVID three months ago. My wife is related to Linda and her husband David, the Maryland Heights couple that the lady just passed away on Tuesday, and they have two kids. I know several people that have had to be intubated and have faced serious symptoms from this disease, this virus. I don't think right now is the time to be taking away the direction of the Department of Public Health. I think that the anger and frustration should actually be directed at the U.S. Senate and the president for failing to come up with relief for these small businesses, these restaurants, that we knew that they were going to be hurting, everybody's hurting, and I think that we should be focusing on them and calling them every day and trying to get them to pass something to help these businesses out, because I really do believe that Dr. Page is doing the necessary things, listening to the Department of Health and trying to get a handle on these deaths. So that's what I've got tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Josh Share.
We're having some difficulty. I cannot get Mr. Sullivan moved up to a panelist. I don't know if it's the way he registered. He's in there, but I can't move him up. I don't know why.
Okay, we will reach out to Mr. Sullivan for his comments. Can you find Josh Share? Josh Share?
Coming next.
Hello, Diane. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Josh Share, zip code 63011. I made a list of some observations and rules for COVID, basically things we didn't know about viruses before COVID, such as walking into a restaurant with a mask on and taking it off when seated, because you can apparently can only catch COVID if you are taller than five feet. Restaurants can have outdoor dining even if it looks just like indoor dining. Shutting down restaurants, but Walmart, Target, and Costco can be open, and they are jam-packed. Wearing a mask in the car by yourself. Social distancing, six feet apart, why not five feet? Why not seven feet? Eliminating roller dogs and soft drinks at gas stations, because apparently they are a huge contributor of the Rona. At a restaurant, having to use an electronic menu, having no salt, pepper shaker, or ketchup, but then have our server touch our plates, napkins, and then my credit card and/or cash. Using plexiglass at grocery stores, but the cashier and bagger touches everything I just bought. I didn't know viruses couldn't get around plexiglass. Watching people put on a mask to go into a gas station to buy cigarettes because health. Closing gyms because apparently exercise is now unhealthy. Wearing a mask while playing sports because your body needs regurgitated CO2 as opposed to oxygen when exercising. Minimizing or eliminating spectators at kid's sports, especially outdoor sports. But again, we can walk into any Walmart, Target, Lowe's, or Home Depot, and the place is packed. Believing the government actually cares about our health. If that was true, why not use CAREZAC money to hand out vitamin D and zinc supplements? And never mentioning stats like survival rate or hospitalization rates compared to year over year. And finally, people who actually think an anesthesiologist, politician, and Steve Stanger's good friend can keep them safe from a virus. I mean, why even go to a doctor anymore? We have Steve Stanger's BFF, Sam Page, to save us all. Tim Fitch and Mark Harder, you guys are patriots. Please hold the line. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by Johanna Bodine.
Okay, my name is Jason Moore, 63021. I just essentially had three things to mention. I would, first and foremost, or the first one, would I would like to get some kind of official comment out of Attorney Orwick regarding her thoughts on County Executive Page and Councilwoman Clancy's use of Signal app. Any thoughts on auditing their phones to see what kind of data's been manipulated or deleted off their phones, off their messaging systems, instead of those messages being stored in some kind of government centralized system? Number two, revolution just today that Western Anesthesiology Associates Incorporated received $5.4 million in PPP money. Does anybody know how that was approved or audited? Did anybody question this whatsoever other than the county executive's office? There's an obvious conflict of interest of the distribution of this money to Dr. Page's own firm. Per the Business Journals, the distribution of Western Anesthesiology Associates Incorporated was among the biggest in the region, according to the new data, ranking it number 44 out of 44,221 approved loans. The maximum distribution was $10 million per firm. It's rather curious that somebody, some business can get this amount of money, knowing somebody, they know somebody at the top of the chain of command of the county. Good to know that guy, right? Number three, does the county executive's office have all their data and court documentation ready to go for tomorrow's court-mandated deadline to answer the suit brought by local restaurants led by Mr. Benjamin Brown? Me thinks probably not, because otherwise, why would Dr. Page's fundraiser Angela Binghamman try to reach out to Mr. Brown in a rather curious way, indicating her ability to get him in contact with Dr. Page? This does obviously not pass the smell test in the least bit and completely inappropriate. And I think none of this exercise would be happening had Dr. Page not decided to attack restaurants in particular. Totally unnecessary. So understanding these points, and evidenced by the new questionable behavior of the past few months, this is definite pattern of behavior by the Page administration that calls into question his ability to lead the county in good faith. It feels much more like a Steve Stanger administration at this point, which is not a good look at all and quite sickening, as that whole situation was an enormous black eye to the region that we're still feeling today. Based on all this, and as a very concerned citizen, I'm calling on County Executive Sam Page to consider resigning his seat, as it's gotten to the point in the county and its citizens that he's an unreliable partner, including our very critical small business and restaurant owners and, pardon me, and their employees, who are bearing the heaviest weight of his odious act, his odious dickpats.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. And our last speaker is Johanna Bodine. Ms. Bodine, are you there?
I can see her, but I'm not hearing anything. It looks like she's on mute now. She's off. Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna need to reach out to her and ask her to submit her comment electronically.
Madam Chair, that completes the public forum.
All right, we will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 308, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Susan Wilson, LCC, to provide consulting services for the Department of Public Health, DPH, related to transitioning DPH health clinic operations to a federally qualified health center look-alike model. Bill number 309, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance approving acceptance of a donation of $3,000 from the St. Louis County Parks Foundation and appropriating the same for support of the purchase by the Department of Parks and Recreation of three cows to be sheltered at Susan Park Animal Farm. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
He told Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Remove the whole Bill number 32, please.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill number 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill number 267 is held.
Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 274. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 274 is perfected.
Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 275.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 275 is perfected.
Bill number 276, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 276.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 276 is perfected.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 277.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 277 is perfected.
Bill number 278, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 278.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 278 is perfected.
Bill number 279, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 279.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 279 is perfected.
Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 280.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 280 is perfected.
Bill number 281, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 281.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 281 is perfected.
Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 282.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 282 is perfected.
Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 283.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 283 is perfected.
Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 284.
Second days.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 284 is perfected.
Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 285.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 285 is perfected.
Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 286.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 286 is perfected.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 287.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 287 is perfected.
Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 288.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 288 is perfected.
Bill number 289, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 289.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 289 is perfected.
Bill number 290, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 290.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 290 is perfected.
Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 291. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 291 is perfected.
Bill number 292, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 292.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 292 is perfected.
Bill number 293, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 293.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 293 is perfected.
Bill number 294, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 294.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 294 is perfected.
Bill number 295, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 295.
Second days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 295 is perfected.
Bill number 296, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 296.
Second days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 296 is perfected.
Bill number 297, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 297.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill number 297 is perfected.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Councilmember Trachis if he wants the record to reflect he voted no. That was on Bill number 296.
298, yes. 297.
297.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on to Bill number 298, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 298.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 298 is perfected.
Bill number 299, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 299.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 299 is perfected.
Bill number 300, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 300.
Second, Ryan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 300 is perfected.
Bill number 301, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill 301.
Second, Ryan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 301 is perfected.
Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
Please hold bill number 302. Bill number 302 is held.
Bill number 303, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of be, bill number 303.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 303 is perfected.
Bill number 304, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I've moved to perfect bill number 304.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 304 is perfected.
Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 305.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 305 is perfected.
Bill number 306, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 306.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 306 is perfected.
Bill number 307, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 307.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill 307 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move to hold bill number 320, bill 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold bill number 76. Bill 76 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 202, bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Hold bill number 220.
Bill 220 is held.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray. You're on mute, Councilmember Gray.
Pardon me. I move for final passage of bill number 268.
Second, Daze. Roll call. Let me see how to do this. Okay.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Member Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Please cast your vote, sir.
Didn't cap, come up on the screen. Sorry.
Your vote did not, your voting thing didn't come up on the screen?
No ma'am.
Okay. I'll vote aye for you, sir. Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 268, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 268 is finally passed.
Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 269. Is there a second? Roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Second, Daze.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? I didn't hear you, Councilmember Gray.
Keep forgetting to unmute. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus, did you get the vote?
Did not. There is no button. I voted, um, aye.
I have you down as aye. Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 269, there are seven ayes.
A motion carries, bill number 269 is finally passed.
Moving on to bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I might, I move for final passage of bill number 270.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Please cast your vote. Thank you. Councilmember Tracus?
Aye. Once again, no button.
We are checking into that, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 270, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 270 is finally passed.
Bill number 271, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 271.
Second.
Second, Ryan.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 271, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 271 is finally passed.
Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 272.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 272, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 272 is finally passed.
Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
This bill is the extension of a bill from earlier this year, and it gives, uh, businesses and, uh, others the ability to, uh, step outside the zoning, uh, laws for a period of time until April 30th, so that they can conduct business. So, I move for final passage of bill number 273.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 273, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 273 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have four additional resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, excuse me, resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder.
Madam Chair, would you have the resolution read its, in its entirety, please?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Sergeant Herschel Turner of the Moline Acres Police Department tragically lost his life in the line of duty on December 5th, 2020. And whereas Sergeant Turner served the wider community as a law enforcement officer for 22 years, including with the city of Moline Acres since 2015, and with the city of Page Dale prior to that. And whereas Sergeant Turner was described by Moline Acres Police Chief Gregory Moore as an outstanding asset to the city of Moline Acres and the community, and as a perfect attendance-type officer who loved his job and did it well. And whereas Sergeant Turner was cherished by those citizens whom he served, and was considered a favorite uncle and a big brother by those that knew him well, and a friend by many more. And whereas Sergeant Turner was incredibly dedicated to his community, and on countless occasions, he went above and beyond the call of duty, including by driving local students to school when they missed the school bus. And whereas, in yet another example of his dedication, Sergeant Turner helped a young adult from his community who was on the wrong track, and who went to prison by corresponding frequently with the young adult and helping them overcome drug addiction. The young adult referred to Sergeant Turner as their angel in uniform, and said that Sergeant Turner had shown them that life is greater than what we see in those times we feel alone. And whereas Sergeant Turner is survived by his beloved wife Donna Turner and three beautiful daughters. And whereas, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis countyans to pause to honor a dedicated public servant who gave his life in service to his community and who will be dearly missed by all of those who knew him. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council offers its deepest condolences to the family of Sergeant Herschel Turner and to the Moline Acres community for the loss of a dedicated and exemplary public servant, and an honorable and caring man. Section 2, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Donna Turner as a permanent token of the council's deepest condolences and its admiration for Sergeant Turner's dedicated service.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Can we have a moment of silence?
I think that is in order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harder, for that. I, that was going to be my, uh, next action, but thank you very much for that. We, uh, these resolutions are very difficult. Uh, this was a young man whose, uh, life was well-lived, and, uh, it was cut, uh, much too short. So with that, Madam Chair, I do move for the adoption of resolution number 1.
Second.
Um, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number 1 is adopted.
Resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmembers Harder and Fitch.
Please read, uh, uh, resolution number 2.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas Robert Bob Ruck has served the city of Manchester, Missouri for 51 years, beginning his career in government at the age of 18 with a summer job that saw him mowing rites of way, and ending most recently as the city's Director of Public Works. And whereas Bob was one of five children born to Robert and Margaret Ruck, and he grew up in Manchester where he graduated from Parkway West Senior High School. He later attended St. Louis Community College at Merrimack, where he earned his associate degree in field supervisory and management development. And whereas Bob served in a number of roles with Manchester as he worked his way up, having served as an operator of the Manchester Wastewater Treatment Plant, a field supervisor of the Department of Public Works, the maintenance superintendent of Public Works, and the assistant public works director, before being finally promoted to Director of Public Works for the city of Manchester in 2008. And whereas Bob worked on various projects and grants to improve the city of Manchester throughout the years, including the 2018 $16 million Proposition S bond issue, which provided funding for the planned repair of the city's streets and sidewalks, representing the city in the critical MoDOT reconstruction of Highway 141, which included the Manchester Road Interchange, always making sure the citizens had safe drinking water, and ensuring that the 65 miles of city streets were navigable. And whereas Bob helped Manchester acquire Tree City USA status, which recognizes the importance of an urban tree canopy and emphasizes improving the care of these vital city trees, and helped the city receive the Tree City USA Growth Award. And whereas Bob has served as a great example of dedication and loyalty to others who work in or aspire to work in local government, and his sense of humor, kindness, energy, and graciousness have enriched the lives of those fortunate enough to know and work with him. And whereas the residents of Manchester and many civic leaders in the St. Louis region have built friendships and relationships with Bob over the years that they all will forever cherish. And whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the council and all St. Louis countyans to recognize the lifetime of dedicated public service that Bob Ruck has given to the city of Manchester, its residents, and our region as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council expresses its most sincere admiration and recognition for Mr. Bob Ruck's 51 years of service to the city of Manchester, and for his many achievements and contributions to the smooth operations of the Manchester Public Works Department, and further expresses its appreciation and gratitude for those contributions, and wishes him well in his retirement. Section 2, the administrative director shall prepare a certified copy of this resolution to be presented to Mr. Ruck as a permanent token of the council's admiration and gratitude.
Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 2.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember- Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is finally passed or is adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, and Clancy.
Please read the resolution as outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas founded and led by Ms. Erica Williams, A Red Circle is a nonprofit organization located in North Saint Louis County that works to achieve the inclusive betterment of our community and to reverse the effects of racism by combating economic segregation and employment, education, holistic living, policy, and the arts, and whereas the name A Red Circle is based on the following principles: one, red because all blood is red, and two, a circle because we are all connected by humanity and the need for safety, unity, and a healthy community, and whereas, as a proud member of the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce and the Heartland Midwest Black Chamber of Commerce, A Red Circle has promoted community betterment in a number of ways, including through providing COVID-nineteen relief in partnership with STL Mutual Aid, establishing community gardens and an affordable farmer's market, voter registration and education drives, job and education resource fairs, Kwanzaa celebrations, and much more, and whereas, through its work in racial equity and human rights, A Red Circle affirms the United Nations statement that everyone has the right to a quality education, employment with dignity, fresh food and water, the right to engage in democracy, and the right to enjoy the arts. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its most sincere gratitude to the organization A Red Circle and its founder and executive director, Ms. Erica Williams, and sends its best wishes for A Red Circle and Ms. Williams's continued success in making North Saint Louis County a better and stronger community.
I move for the adoption of resolution, resolution number one.
Second, Days.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye. Pardon me.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Resolution number six, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Whereas, Saint Louis region civic groups and community members, including Forward Through Ferguson, the Saint Louis Violence Prevention Commission, and the NAACP Saint Louis County Chapter, have noted the need for interactions between law enforcement and residents to be rooted in mutual trust and respect and have identified ways to build trust and accountability between law enforcement and residents, particularly between police officers and vulnerable populations, and whereas mistrust of law enforcement puts both community members and officers in harm's way and can reduce cooperation with law enforcement cases which could lead to retaliatory violence, and whereas it is the belief of this council that overtime hours should be distributed fairly and equitably among all employees regardless of seniority status, and further this council recommends there be a fiscal and performance audit, including diversity efforts beginning in two thousand twenty-one and every two years thereafter, and whereas the right to organize and collectively bargain is a fundamental right enjoyed by law enforcement and other workers, yet police unions have a history of using their influence to establish protections that have the impact of helping officers avoid accountability, and whereas the Saint Louis County Police Department and the Saint Louis County Police Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge One-eleven, FOP, are currently negotiating the terms and conditions of a new collective bargaining agreement, CBA, for those holding the rank of sergeant, and whereas the Saint Louis County Council is empowered to authorize Saint Louis County to enter into the CBA on the terms reached at the bargaining table. However, the council is also empowered to reject the proposal or to authorize the county to enter into the CBA with terms as modified by the council, at which point the county and the FOP may enter into the CBA as authorized, return to the bargaining table, or reach an impasse, and whereas the Saint Louis County Council is committed to ensuring a police force that is well-paid, well-trained, and accountable to the community it serves, and in anticipation of the receipt and requested approval of the aforementioned CBA wishes to make clear its exceptions and principles in regards to the terms and conditions of the agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the Saint Louis County Council expects a CBA that has taken into account community input, removes barriers to effective misconduct investigation investigations, and provides civilian oversight by allowing for accountability mechanisms to work in tandem with the Saint Louis County Board of Police Commissioners, makes officers disciplinary histories accessible to the Saint Louis County Police Department and the public to the extent permitted by law, and to effectuate this, the Board of Police Commissioners should consider adoption of policies that promote transparency in the disciplinary process, such as releasing the names of officers involved in uses of deadly force or excessive force unless the officer's safety would be jeopardized, and to open personnel records in the manner provided for in the county's Sunshine Ordinance, and ensures financial accountability of Saint Louis County and officers that improperly kill or seriously injure civilians, including removing any contract provisions that allow officers to receive paid leave or paid desk duty after being charged with a felony offense. Section two, the council welcomes dialogue with the Saint Louis County Board of Police Commissioners pursuant to these matters throughout the duration of the CBA process and in policy discussions that may follow. Further, the council recommends that the Board of Police Commissioners continue to develop ways that allow for public input during the negotiation of the CBA. Section three, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the superintendent of police and the Saint Louis County Police Commissioners.
I think that councilmembers and community groups and citizens that weighed in over the course of the past couple of weeks to get this resolution into what we will be voting on tonight. With that, I move for the adoption of resolution number six. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Actually hit the button. Did you see it come up? The request to speak?
I did not.
We have a button?
But I think it suffices to just let me know the way you did.
Okay, if I could just make a few comments. Chairwoman Clancy, you know, I gave you multiple recommendations to make this more palatable for everyone. You made almost no changes that I suggested, so I wanted to cover a couple of those. In paragraph three, we're saying the council recommends there be a fiscal and performance audit, including diversity efforts beginning in two thousand twenty-one and every two years thereafter. Do you realize that you're now going to do this requested every two years? Well, currently it's every year. This is already required. It's a Kalia standard requirement for all of this. Now you're going to say, you're going to suggest to the department they do it less often than they're doing it now. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. And then you also go after a police union saying they're using their influence to establish protections that have the impact of helping officers to avoid accountability. That's an opinion. I guess you could say that about any union. Any union goes to bat for their members. Absolutely go to bat for their members. And I'm assuming that all future union issues, you'll feel the same way about the other unions as well. Also, the terms is modified by the council, which is one of your recommendations. That is not legal. The county council is not the county's bargaining agent. So that can't happen. Both sides have to agree to that. We are not the bargaining agent. Also, in section one, where it says investigations that provide civilian oversight, the county police department already has that through the civilian Board of Police Commissioners. And then further down the paragraph, including removing any contract provisions that allow officers to receive paid leave or paid desk duty after being charged with a felony offense, that's been a department policy since I became a police officer in nineteen eighty-three. So what is there to remove in the contract that doesn't allow that? That's nothing more than just an eye poke. It's just, there's no reason for that to even be there. And my final statement would be, is everything that you're wanting to do here, most of it, the vast majority of it is either just absolutely illegal or it already exists, and it's really a slap in the face to every hard-working police officer out there. And I really wonder what the family of Sergeant Turner would think, knowing that on the same night after we do a moment of silence for him, for him giving up his life in the line of duty? Really? This is what we want to say? That's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
I appreciate your perspective on this, Councilman Fitch. I did incorporate some of your concerns on this into the resolution that we are voting on tonight. As far as it goes with Kalia standards, I understand that there are audits of the police department from this perspective. However, there is mixed opinion whether or not the Kalia audits are effective, and I think that it would be helpful to get additional perspectives from a diversity and inclusion perspective. As it relates to some of the other statements that you shared in this, I want to recognize that intent and impact are different. I do not think the intent of the police department is to be unfair to civilians. However, in the two years that I have been on the council, I have listened to probably what amounts to hours, either at public comment or in other forums, the concerns of citizens who share with sometimes heartbreaking stories about how they feel like they have been harmed by police officers, and I think that that actually has the impact sometimes as we learn that there are protections in collective bargaining agreements that can help to further that harm. And it is important that for the safety of officers and our entire community, that there is a more trusting relationship. I worked with our counselor's office to make sure that there is nothing in this resolution that is considered illegal. So I disagree with your statement that there are things in here that are not legal. We make no mention of promoting any additional civilian oversight body other than the one that is currently provided by the police commission. And then finally, to your point about the pieces in here that are already happening, again, I have heard mixed information from those on the inside as well as the outside about some of the policies that you say are true. And if it's something that's already in there, then consider it a proactive statement and a nod to keep doing what you're doing when it comes to discipline of police officers who may have gone against policy to use use of force. So I thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
First of all, I had talked to you earlier about this, and I was very surprised of the people that you had reached out to and their approval of what your resolution is doing here. But, and maybe many of you don't know this, but earlier this afternoon, we had a meeting with Justice and Welfare Committee, and we had the ESOP there. One commissioner did come, which was very good, but none of the rest of them showed up. I'm not sure why, but that's the chair's purview. But many of the issues that we're talking about right now were discussed in that meeting. We have to do better. We have to do better, and I'm thinking that the place to start here would be this collective bargaining agreement. This resolution makes a statement about how we want the interaction between our law enforcement, black officers and citizens, and the community as a whole. I do not agree with everything that is in this resolution, and sometimes I think when you're making laws or decisions like that, you know, if nobody's happy on the other side, you might have a pretty good document there. But it is indeed a statement that requires us to do some kind of an action. We have not done that. We've had task force. We have had strategic plans. We have the Ferguson Consent Decree. We have all these reports, but we do not have action. And earlier today, it was mentioned that the Department of Justice may be coming in to look at our department, and to me, that would be embarrassing to have someone else to come in here and tell us what we need to do. We know what needs to be done. And the fact of the matter is, we are not doing it. And so I do acknowledge that there are some things in here that cause me pause. I do that. But I think that by and large, to make a statement like that, to say that we do have problems, we need to address those problems, but we will not have addressing those problems until we acknowledge that they are there. And by the way, the audit refers to a diversity audit. We're not looking at anything else. We're looking at the financial in terms of the overtime, but I don't think that Kalia requires us to have a diversity audit, and I think that is what's needed at this particular point. So I do thank you, Councilman Fitch, for your input in that, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clancy, thank you for that. But, you know, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to move toward action. So I know this is a resolution, but perhaps it will lead us to doing something about the issues that we face. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right.
One follow-up question.
Go ahead.
I heard something about a justice, health, and welfare meeting today, and I'm a member of that committee, and I wasn't invited or I'm not aware of that committee meeting today. Can somebody help me understand that?
We didn't have meetings. It was just she and I.
She?
Committee meeting.
So who all was there?
It's a quorum.
It was just she and I, just two people. There wasn't a committee meeting, so.
So you're just having a discussion. It wasn't a justice, health, and welfare committee meeting. Is that what you're saying? I'm having trouble understanding you.
Exactly. It was not.
There are four members of that committee. Two members does not constitute a quorum.
I think, I think.
And it wasn't a committee meeting anyway, so. Our committee discussion.
She's on mute. Councilwoman Days was trying to talk. She was on mute.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke in terms of a committee meeting. It was a discussion that Councilwoman Gray and I had with the ESOP, so that was a mistake on my part. I apologize for that.
Thank that, Councilman Fitch, because I also did not get an invitation to a committee hearing today. So with that, we will go ahead and vote. Please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on resolution number six, there are four ayes and three noes.
Resolution number six is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one, Sixth District.
Do the new liquor license be approved as requested, please?
Back out.
All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business. Please hold on the order of business. Receive file and the matter be held on the order of business. I am working with the rest of the council to ascertain to what extent they would like to have hearings on these appointments. So we will determine that in the coming days. So again, the matter will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Yes ma'am. Item number three?
Again, these pertain to various appointments to boards and commissions, so I similarly will receive file and the matter be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Speak and file, and please hold the matter on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number five?
Again, receive file and the matter be held on the order of business. This is also a board and commission appointment, and that will be the order.
Item number six?
Another board and commission appointment. We will receive file and the matter be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business. Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening. Order number one in the matter of communications from Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration and Acting Director of Procurement, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second, Days?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Any further comments from the council?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
I want to thank Diane and her team for all this technology. We got through it seemingly pretty well, little glitches here and there, but I do like the system, and I do appreciate the support that IT and you have committed to this process. I think it's going to be very good for us even when we return to in-person meetings. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for your support on that.
I echo that support. Thank you, Councilwoman Days, for pointing that out. This is a very exciting development when it comes to council operations, and I hope the public comes to appreciate the efficiencies and ease at which everyone can now view our agenda and attachments, and we've got more to come in the new year related to this. So thanks to the team for getting this done.
Madam Chair, I do have my request to speak up.
And I'm still not seeing it, Councilman Fitch, but if you would like to add something, go right ahead.
Diane, are you getting it?
Councilman Fitch, we had decided back ways that we weren't going to use that feature, but we could certainly revisit that and discuss it, so.
Good to know. My question is, I guess for the counselor's office. So earlier in the agenda, the very beginning, we suspended the council rules to move resolutions up to the front of the agenda, correct?
Correct. I think that question was addressed to the counselor's office. Am I correct, Councilman Fitch?
It's a legal question, I am.
Yeah. Beth, please address that.
That happened, yes.
So that's based on the council rules that are in effect, is that right?
Yeah, I believe so.
So how did the council rules become into effect? What made them go into effect? This council did what to make those go into effect?
Councilman Fitch, I'm not sure where you're going with this, but I am so happy to discuss your legal questions outside of a public forum. As you know, I don't like to give legal advice during a public meeting.
Well, I think it's a pretty simple answer. We passed a resolution to put those council orders into effect, is that right?
You adopted a resolution?
Yes. So are we to believe that that resolution has no validity? It has no effect? And this goes to the question asked by one of the citizens earlier today about resolutions. What's a resolution? The council chairwoman said we passed a fake mask mandate last week because it was a resolution. So can you tell us as council members, what's a real resolution? What's a fake resolution?
Well, I don't know how I would characterize, but this resolution that you're talking about, about the rules of council rules, it is administrative, and the council does have within its purview to do an administrative resolution for your council rules. It is not an executive action, which is different than an administrative resolution. So you have a rule governing how you would like to conduct yourselves, which is a rule for legislative purposes, but not an executive purpose.
Okay, so there are some resolutions that have the effect that are not, to use the word, I think I heard the county executive use, symbolic?
Well, you have a legislative action for the charter.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Harder.
I also have a question. What is the difference between a binding resolution and a non-binding resolution?
With regards to what type of resolution?
Any kind of resolution. We all talk about it, whether it's binding or not. What is a binding resolution?
Well, some resolutions are statement of intent, and some resolutions, for example, what resolution regarding your rules is a rule set up for your legislative body.
How do we know the difference?
Depending on what type of resolution it is. Each resolution needs to be looked at independently. Some are statements of intent and support, and some are binding on the council.
Okay, so does it have to say binding in the resolution to be binding?
No.
Okay. Does it have to say intent in the resolution to have intent?
Councilman Harder, you should look in the charter. And in the charter, it would tell you what type of resolution it is based on what type of language is included in the resolution.
Councilman Harder, this is addressed in the charter, and if there's citizens that are curious about this, I would also point them to the charter, which is on the St. Louis County website. I understand that the charter can be hard sometimes for citizens to understand because there's some legal language, but I encourage people who have concerns about this to reach out to our respective offices and ask, and we can help them navigate it.
Okay. So I just want one question. Our resolution we passed last week about the masking, what type of resolution was that we passed?
The masking resolution from last week?
Yes.
That is symbolic. It's a statement of intent or support.
We are a charter county, Councilman Harder.
I'm worried.
I understand that, I understand you've made very clear your desire to go through a different process pertaining to health orders, but that just fundamentally is not how we run government here in St. Louis County. So I think you've made your intent clear with your resolution, but unfortunate, I mean, not unfortunately necessarily, because I stand on the side of public health and keeping people safe, the resolution just isn't going to, doesn't hold legal weight.
You don't get to decide that.
Harder does.
No, you don't get to.
The counselor's office helps us to interpret the charter. So it all comes from the charter.
You mean the charter that says that the county executive has to devote the entire time of his office to the duties of his office?
He does. All right. It is time, I think, to end this meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Have a good evening, everybody.